Twenty four. Question of payment for skills.
Twenty five or twenty two?
Twenty. Twenty. Query begins, it starts at twenty four, page twenty four.
Okay.
Query number D. Question of payment for skills at non-operational training centers. This is where the council paid nine hundred and thirteen thousand kwacha to hundred and forty-five learners in three institutions, one of them being the Zivavika, Vavika Training Academy. And they've referred us to appendix KL as where the evidences are. Also, they are telling us that they've issued a legal notice to Vavika. Because after inspection, it was discovered that this Vavika, where they were paid nine hundred thousand, was non-operational. And they came from Usaka City Council is that at the time they were making payments, this institution was operational. So my first question here is, do they monitor? Because just this situation here explains that Usaka City Council does not monitor what happens in these areas because they would have discovered themselves that Vavika was non-operational. Do you monitor and how regular? Then number two, where is this legal demand notice? You are referring us in KL because I've tried to check this document. And the payment vouchers for the same nine hundred and thirteen thousand, it's not here. I've checked, maybe my eyes can't see properly. Also, we want to see the student headcount register so that we see if these students indeed signed in agreeing that they were paid for. Our interest also, we have not seen any payment regarding the student means, which is an area of interest also. So then also you have said there's a council, you saw a cancellation letter from Taveta for the same institution. I've checked all this document. It is not there, Chair. Then we go to page forty-two.
Maybe we go.
Step by step.
You, for your own information, we have all the time to do justice to this report. And Town Clerk, as I indicated earlier, if there will be need for your office to call support systems, we should do so. So I want Honorable Members to take our time so that we deal with this report religiously. So I want you, the first part to be asked. Then we get the response, I'll ask the follow-ups. We clear the matter, we go to another issue. The issue you have raised, the Honorable Parvima, is payments to non-operational training centers, particularly of mentioned Vavika Training Academy, having been operational at some time, later on discovered that this Vavika Academy has ceased to operate. Immediately receive the money. Town Clerk and your team, we need to follow so that you give us the responses. Honorable Parvima further said, questioned how you do pay to a college that immediately after getting payment, they cease to exist. Further, would like to see an authentic list of the students that were taken to Vavika. Their application forms that were approved was for you to assign them. There are application forms that come from the WDCs that you use as a basis for approval later on payment. We should need to look at, you finish this committee. Also, the invoice that you used to pay nine hundred and thirteen thousand kwacha. For Kawata, number of students ninety-two. Mandevu fifty-three. Total one forty-five students that were sent to this non-functional, these non-functional centers. So I'll ask, you want, it's so pressing?
But Chair, before you leave, including a letter, they came across the cancellation letter on the second May, twenty twenty-four.
We need a cancellation letter dated.
Second, the one they came across on the second May, twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
And with your indulgence, maybe before we go deeper, maybe we know each other in terms of who was there at that particular time and who was not there.
Yes, the follow-up will come. Okay, let me allow you to do a follow-up.
Yeah, Chair, it's not, it's, it's, it's an additional concern, yes. Honorable Parvima has alluded to the issue of Vavika being deregistered. And the Town Clerk said, at the time of payment, Vavika was operational. For me, I'm concerned, I want to see a letter indicating that it was operational. Here, they are showing us, Chair, a letter of registration as they are talking about. But how do we prove that at the point they were sending or at the point when they were sending these, the money, the college was operational? Any evidence to that effect?
Thank you very much, Town Clerk and your team. Please help the Town Clerk as we proceed. Directors planning or Directors Engineering, Director Finance and all legal, you are a team, please. It is the Town Clerk that is just a spokesperson, you need help. But before we ask you to proceed, Town Clerk, we want to find out from you. We don't want to sound unfair or pushing people who might not have been there. The first question is, Town Clerk, where are you there in twenty twenty-three? Use your mic, we are live.
I was there as Director Engineering.
Okay.
Yeah, but I started acting in September twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Director Ego, where are you at Usaka City Council? Twenty twenty-three, the year under review. You use your mic once you are asked a question. The other director, is it Audit? Yes, the Chief Internal Auditor, where are you there in twenty twenty-three?
Thank you, Chair, I came in December twenty twenty-three.
Director Finance?
Chair, I came in, in August twenty twenty-three.
The other brother, the Director, Director?
Thank you, Chair, I joined Usaka City Council last year in May.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director Engineering?
Chair, I joined the Usaka City Council in November last year.
Sir there?
Thank you, Chair, for the question. I came to Usaka City Council in November last year. Thank you.
Okay.
I joined Usaka City Council in December twenty twenty-four, last year.
I joined Usaka City Council in October twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two?
Chair, I came to Usaka City Council last year, May.
So generally, we have a new team. Assistant Director Engineering, you were there in twenty twenty-two when all these activities were taking place. Director Engineering, you went after twenty twenty-three. The question is, Town Clerk, you have gone through your report. Are you comfortable and ready not to respond but to adequately clear the queries pertaining to the activities that took place at Usaka City Council? Why I say not to respond? We are trying to avoid people responding to questions. You have seen the first question that has come. Details of certain documents confirmations. If you are ready, we are proceeding. The position of this committee has been that where possible, we call officers wherever they have been transferred unless they are retired or they are not in service. Wherever they are transferred, they come to accompany you to clear these queries. But this is thrown to you. If you are comfortable, we are proceeding. Why I've said this is we don't want to be cited to be asking or pushing people for things that they are not, they were not involved with. Are you comfortable, Town Clerk, we proceed?
We proceed, Chair.
Thank you very much. Respond to the questions raised by the two honorable members.
Thank you, Chair. We start with the Director Planning.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, Chair, Honorable Parvima raised concerns on the issue of whether or not we do conduct monitoring with regard to basari and skills development as well as student headcount register and also the issue to do with application forms, Chair. So Chair, allow me to mention that it's noted that we didn't do well in terms of, you know, seeing that Vavika was by last year in May was having issues with Taveta. But Chair, with me, like we have indicated in our report, you would see that the registration list from Taveta that we have touched in our report, we were fully guided as an institution at the time because that time Vavika was not having any compliance issues with the Taveta. So even when we paid these payments, Chair, you would see that accordingly, we were following that Vavika was in good terms with the regulator authority, which is Taveta. Such that along the way, Chair, as of last year in May, Taveta, I mean, had to, you know, cancel the registration for, for the mentioned school, which is Vavika, Chair. But in terms of monitoring, Chair, where we are, we have aligned ourselves and we have actually improved in terms of consistent, consistency in monitoring such that now we only had one M and E officer. But as we speak, Chair, through the TC also, I have to mention that this time around, we have six M and E officers attached to the Department of Development Planning. So Chair, we are trying going forward, Chair. Allow me to pause here, Chair.
Before I allow follow-up questions, Vavika Academy in question, where is it situated? Is it in Kitwe, Jasefu, Livingstone? Where is Vavika? The location of Vavika, Director City Planning?
Chair, as you can see even on the list that is before this committee, this institution is within Usaka District of our province, Chair.
Did the council do due diligence by actually locating where Vavika is and how the students that were sent to Vavika for whichever courses we are doing before making payment? Second, would you show us the invoice that you based the payment on from Vavika? Town Clerk?
Thank you so much, Chair. Maybe, Chair, allow me to give a bit of history. The, the way it started was, we had students that were sent at Vavika. Vavika is located somewhere in Kawata. So during the period under review, Vavika had also some students from outside Usaka. Now, the students that were outside Usaka, I think that's where the problem was. Because when there was some monitoring, which was undertaken by the Kawata CDF, which involved, I think among them, councilors matter, they found that the boarding students, I think where they were being kept in the warehouse was not okay. And then that matter was reported to the authorities and the like. So eventually, that's what led to the closure of the institution, obviously. Even though by then Taveta had given the license to operate, but when they looked at the boarding facilities and the other, especially which are affected the students which were coming out to South Usaka, it was found that, you know, the environment was not good. So on that, the, the Taveta decided to issue a closure letter, I think which we have here. So now, when it was closed, by then also our Usaka students, but our Usaka students were not housed because they were day students. So they were also affected. So now, and that was around, is it May, May, April, twenty twenty-four?
Point of interjection, Chair.
Town Clerk, we want you to be precise with your reports.
Yes.
Your responses, we don't want to curtail you, but you do help this committee by answering the questions. You are giving us history. We wanted to know the location, the invoice that was used to pay. Honorable Parvima asked also the list of students from Vavika. You, what happens in other councils, I don't know if it's in Usaka. It's different from Usaka. What they do, these students, they apply. In this case, they should have applied to Vavika. And Vavika College or Academy, they accept in particular courses. And these acceptance letters, they go to the planning office. Are we moving together?
Yes, Chair.
When they reach the planning office, the planner would take to the CDF committee that the following students, fifty-three from Mandevu, ninety-two from Kawata, have been accepted to undertake courses in such such from a location known by the council. Upon that approval, that college produces an invoice that comes to you after approval by the council and the provincial local government office. That's when you issue, they issue an invoice for your payment. The questions are very simple. Do we have the forms, acceptance forms from Vavika for the courses? You have to show us which appendix? Do we have the invoice as a basis for the payment of nine hundred? Refer to that invoice and the payment. If it's a transfer, a payment voucher that was made to Vavika. Further, you have said the Usaka based, they were commuting. I wanted also to find out, just a bonus one, because you mentioned it. So the students from Mandevu were commuting every day from Mandevu, forty-three of them, to Kawata where Vavika Academy was situated. arising from what you mentioned. Then there are some questions that Honorable Parvima asked. You need to take note. Please Directors, help the Town Clerk, taking note on the questions that are coming on the floor. Honorable Simonde also asked. So that the Town Clerk, when he misses out one, you are either to know this one also respond or you help him to respond. With those, Town Clerk, we want you to help this committee and the people of Usaka, Mandevu and Kawata about Vavika. We thank the councillor who went instead of officers, who went to see the conditions prevailing at that college. Would have loved personally, if it was the officers who could have been doing that to check the environment where our students are learning from. But we thank that councillor, is it councillor who?
Councillor Smata with the officers from Public Health, Kawaosa.
You can proceed, Town Clerk.
Thank you so much.
I still want to.
Let's allow him.
On the, Chair is comparing because what he just presented is not consistent with the submission. He's telling us that that physical inspection where councillor Smata was involved is what he reviewed the, what, how the students were being kept and they reported and after reporting is what culminated into the cancellation.
Your mic is off?
Which is opposite to what they've submitted here. What they've submitted here, if I may read, Chair, is a physical verification carried out in October twenty twenty-four, reviewed that schools were, were not operational rendering payment of nine hundred and thirteen thousand. Questionable. So physical inspection, when they went, they had already found that that school was closed, not the opposite, the ways. So is it your wish that you withdraw this statement and replace it with what you are saying? Or you withdraw there? Because we needed to speak to the truth here and we expect some consistent, your indulgence, Chair, to have the correct.
Town Clerk, we want to be fair. We shall stick to your written and as you are responding, take note that our questions or points of clarification are arising from what you and the auditors exposed to us. So don't give us a story outside. Stick to the, what you have given us so that we move together because we are not part of Usaka. Although we are, because we are members of parliament and part of the governance system, we are. But we'd like the people of Zambia to know what has been happening at Usaka City Council.
Thank you so much, Chair. Maybe on the documents that are being requested, I will request that DF, Director Finance runs us through. Though I must also state that, Chair, the matter is under investigation with the ACC, so the payment vouchers and other documents were gotten by the investigation wings.
After, as you delegate, your officers, you switch off your mic, DC?
Thank you, Chair. In relation to to the question that we asked, we have two booklets that are speaking to the appendices for the skills training. We have KL and you have KL two.
So the, the KL two, when I was going through, I couldn't see it, I would need the help, but the KL I have. I tried KL two.
Chair, why are we going to KL two? Because they have said, refer to appendix KL where there is a legal demand notice, where there is a cancellation letter. That's what I'm saying, using the same document that you have put in the. You show us because we have it. From first page to last page, I'll take.
You have KL two? Who has KL two? Because the documents that were given to us. The white one?
But they will not, they will not spoken to it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So Chair, on the KL two, KL two document, it's, the legal demanding notice is just the second last document.
On the?
Yes. Where there is a demanding notice for recovery.
For recovery?
Yes, for the recovery of the one million three hundred and sixty.
Let's go to.
Yes, second last. There are two, there's one which was written by the councillor and the one that was signed by the Town Clerk.
The one million three hundred and sixty thousand nine twenty?
Yes.
This is the coming from the councillor?
There is the next from last.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, this one. This one is coming from the Town Clerk himself?
Chair.
He's writing to Vavika in twenty twenty-four October. When were you audited, Town Clerk?
Were audited from July to, to November.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-four.
Chair, your, your legal demand notice indicates that it was written in October. Mine is indicating eleven June, twenty twenty-four. Before the reveration. Because the reveration was in October, twenty twenty-four. This demanding notice was written before, in June. Before they knew that these institutions were closed.
And the other issue, Town Clerk, take note, DF and Town Clerk, the other issue is, the query here is about nine hundred and thirteen thousand to Vavika. But the demand notices are talking about one million three hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and twenty. How do we relate to the query, the payment that was done? Wouldn't the invoice that came from Vavika help you? Because this could be different. They could.
This is even the twenty twenty-four CDF. What we are querying is twenty twenty-three, the one they had paid on nineteen May, twenty twenty-three. This is speaking to the twenty twenty-four CDF, so it's not the right document.
Is it true, Town Clerk, what Honorable is saying?
Chair, the happenings were around in May. So after that, that's when we issued.
What happens? What happenings? We asking you, is here, the query is nine hundred and thirteen thousand. I will read, Chair, Town Clerk and members, officers. Let's go to page twenty-five of your submission. Starting from twenty-four. There is a schedule there. Payments to non-operational training centers. Although yes, centers, I don't know if it was one. But the constitution says Kawata constituency, number of institutions. For Kawata, there are two. Number of institutions that were non-operational. The number of students, ninety-two. Total amount paid, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred quacha. Mandevu constituents, number of institutions involved, one. Number of students that were involved from Mandevu constituency, fifty-three. Amount, amount involved, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred quacha. Total, totals. Number of students total, hundred forty-five. Total amounts paid, Town Clerk, nine hundred and thirteen thousand quacha. Are we talking to this or what you are telling us with the DF is something else, another query for me for another year? And here we have come to establish, Town Clerk, you need to help your committee. There are two institutions. Here in your response, you are just talking about Vavika. Which could be the other institution where Kawata students were taken to? Then give us the reference. You also went further to say, the matter is before ACC. In your report, you have not mentioned that this matter is before the law enforcement agencies. So which one do we pick? Your verbal submission or what is before us? We are reluctant, Town Clerk, I want to repeat. We do not manufacture any issues. As we follow what is submitted to us. So when you tell us that, how do we proceed? Town Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. I think, Chair, we take what is on, what we have submitted to you as a report. But though maybe, I thought it was worth mentioning, because I think you had asked on the issues of the payments and the like. So though the happenings of the investigations, I think it was after the audit, I think, which the papers, I think, and the documents were gotten last month. The other documentation, because I think we talked...
Town Clerk, we seem to be lost. We don't know what you are telling this committee. You are telling documents taken last month? Last month is March. At the time of audit, where are the documents? If they are with the law enforcement agencies, you were supposed to state in your report or to give us to say, the following documents are not there. Honorable Mulunda?
Chair, just to, I didn't listen to this submission. But just to make us follow your submission, Town Clerk. Just like my colleague is submitting or the Chair is submitting. If the documents, because here, there is only one institution, which is Vavika. But when you check on your table, there are other two institutions where Mandevu constituents took their students. Now, if the, if the documents are with ACC and you know that you are supposed to come and prove to this committee that yes, the documents are with the investigative wing, ACC, why didn't you make an effort to approach ACC? Just a letter that would have attached on your, on your submission. That document one, two, three are with us, ACC writes. And they give you that to come and prove, to send all these documents with those people. Because at times, I think we create unnecessary queries to say, no, why didn't you, why are not producing? Even when they have those, because they know this, this registrative wing of government or arm of government. So there is an obligation that what the arm of, this arm of government demands should be provided. Chair, I thought I should mention.
Thank you very much for that wise guidance. So may we know the other college before we proceed? The other college, the second college? No, there are two in total. What they have just mentioned in their response is just Vavika one. The other college, which is the college? You can be assisted by your director planner, who you say did that, they were involved?
Chair, sorry, on page twenty-five situation, on the table there, they say institutions for Kawata, two. And the, and the Mandevu one. On page twenty-five, on the table, sir.
My assumption, Honorable, is that the one from Mandevu could have been, maybe part of the two for Kawata. We need to learn more, that's why we're asking for that.
My understanding, Chair, is that Kawata sent their students, so two institutions.
Okay.
I don't know.
So there are three. May be clear as guided by our honorable members. May we know?
It is clear in the submission. After physical inspection, all the three schools were not operational. But in terms of mentioning the names of the schools, they've only mentioned Vavika. So the two have not been mentioned, but it is clear that all the three were not operational.
Thank you very much, Honorable Members.
The last paragraph on page twenty-four is very clear.
Thank you very much for the guidance. Let us allow them. We have bombarded them enough. In my preamble, Town Clerk, I asked, do you know these colleges? Are they in Jesefu? Are they where? Anybody that I asked. So you take note, right? You should know. Director Physical Planning, any other officer?
Thank you very much, Chair. So in terms of these institutions, Chair, you, I must mention that there's one. If you go to the list, there's serial number two zero eight, where another institution is Molex College of Science Education.
Just let's go with you slowly. Molex?
Yes, Chair.
Where is it situated?
Chair, I would like you allow me to consult, since you guided that we can consult. Then there's also BH.
BH?
Yes, Chair, I'm just looking for the serial number.
Is it BH DZO or BH, what is the name, full name, BH what?
Chair, I beg your pardon, let me just run through the list.
How are we going to dream that?
No, they have not even responded to any. Because we are still struggling. We want them to demonstrate that they know these colleges. Town Clerk, for instance, if we, we get on our vehicles and say, let's take us to Molex and BH, you going to locate them? So we are waiting for those colleges. So that we establish, because this is where the queries are emanating from. Town Clerk, we give you...
Yeah, please, Chief Internal.
Town Clerk, Town Clerk, we are giving you five minutes. Go and caucus outside. Feel free, be calm, as Honorable Mtero has indicated. We want to know where Molex, want to know what happened on Vavika, want to know where BH and their full names and their location. The other documents we asked, we want the... You can phone the officers you are caucusing to bring you the file of the application forms, the acceptance forms that came and also the minutes of the CDFC committees that approved for these two colleges. We want to be fair. Go and caucus, when you come, you help the Town Clerk. Director City Planning and the team, Director Finance, help the Town Clerk so that we make progress. Thank you. Adjournment for five minutes.
Immediate laughter.
Good afternoon and thank you for still being with us on Parliament Television. My name is Taz Peri, taking over from Mutali Felile. The Committee on Local Government Accounts has taken a five minutes break. And this is just to allow the councils, the Town Clerk and his team to get clarity on some issues that the committee needs to know about. So we will continue once the five minutes break is over. Keep watching Parliament Television.